Commissioners meeting, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Shlangen here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Gepinski.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Okay, approver amend the agenda. I've got one. I'm going to move my Commissioner Heinon discussion, nine fifty-five, right after Chris Berg is done with the engineer reports.
So that's moved, okay. It's moved right before meeting updates.
Yep, right before Commissioner meeting updates.
Got you, okay. Just one, Roxanne would like to give you an update on one watershed, one plan issue, if we could make that her second item under the solar project at nine twenty-five. And those are all the changes that we have.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that all viewers can hear you. County Board observes Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the Board's chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the Board Chair. As we begin today, please turn off the cell phones and/or please put...
There's no one back there.
There's no one back there? Thank you. Dissent agenda items, one through ten, what would we like to do with them?
I'll move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on these? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, Monty.
Mr. Chair, this is the time recognition for Lori Gunderson and Sandy Scholberg is here to make the presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have worked with Lori Gunderson for thirty years, so it is my privilege to give her this retirement award, although it will be a great sadness for our agency for her to be retiring. In the thirty years that Lori has worked with our agency, I have never received a complaint about her work from a client, a person in the community, or from one of her coworkers, and that's unusual. I mean, even the best social workers get complained about because we do things or recommend things that people don't like. So it is pretty amazing that she's been able to gather that kind of respect out in the community. It'll be a great loss for us that Lori is leaving, both for the agency and the mental health unit, however, it'll be a great benefit for her family. So, on behalf of Benton County, I'd like to welcome Lori up here and say our farewells and our well wishes to her and our thanks for all of her hard work.
Thank you, Lori.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Board and Chair, you're the pick.
And I had to wear a mask today.
Here, why don't I have you guys come up here? That way we don't have the glare of the...
I am just following our county policy rules, so I'm fine.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. It's not happening.
I'm not contagious.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lori. Thank you. Great. Thank you so much for your service.
So, Mr. Chair, our next item will be handled by, I believe, Ann is here?
Yeah.
And you have the proclamation, we didn't have the proclamation for your packet, but it's on the dais for her?
Turn it over to Ann.
Yeah, thank you so much for taking time to see us today. So I'm Ann Olson with Benton County 4H Extension Educator, and we are getting ready for hoping to do National 4H Week, October 2nd to the 8th. And I did bring some of our 4Hers with today, just to share a little bit about what 4H means to them. And I've never done a proclamation before, so I'm not sure if we let them share and then we read the proclamation that I'm asking that you would sign. I should have asked whether you had a time?
You can do that either way. We'll let you do it either way.
Okay, well, why don't we let these amazing youth just share just a couple of minutes, if that's okay?
Sure.
That'd be fine, thank you.
So let's start with Bella, since you're right here.
I'm Bella. I have been in 4H for my whole life, so around sixteen years. Got in the ring when I was eighteen months old, so showing livestock has been my whole life, pretty much, and it's really important to me because it gives me somewhere where I belong and I don't have to pretend to be somebody I'm not. At school, you know, not everybody is a 4H showman, so not everybody gets it, but when you're in the ring, it's you and other people that are just like you, so it's somewhere I belong.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Travis Boyle.
I'm just going to keep it running. It'll record. I'm Travis Boyle. I'm going to be a senior at Foley High School. I've been in 4H probably as long as I can remember as well. I started off showing smaller animals, so like swine, rabbit, and I've grown my showing into basically every species. This year at fair, I had success in swine along with goat this year and horse, receiving state trips with horse and swine. The importance of showing livestock is just the baseline of, it has taught me how to win, how to accept loss, and how to grow into the best person that I can be in and outside of the show ring. So, yes.
Thank you.
My name is Morgan Molliter. I'm going to be a senior at Cathedral High School. 4H has taught me a lot about myself, and it's taught me leadership skills and, because and, what's the word for it? Oh, I can't think. Oh, talking skills and like public speaking. I would not be standing in front of you today, talking to you guys, if it was not for 4H. It has given me so much confidence, and this year I'll be heading down to state fair with my breeding guilt, so my female pig, and we will be down there for, I think, the full week, and then we'll be doing some open class. I'm really excited to see all my hard work put into my animals just show off down at the state fair.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
My name's Austin Molliter. I'm a sophomore at Stock Rapids Rice, and this year for 4H, I received state fair trips with swine and poultry, and I'll be taking down a market barrel, so a male pig, yeah. 4H taught me a lot about respect for animals, respect for people, and how much teamwork means, like how it takes more than just one person to help others and just being helpful and asking for help when it's needed and helping others when it's needed.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brady Roberts. I'm a senior at Stock Rapids Rice High School, and 4H this year has taught me a lot and has helped me get, got out of my comfort zone and helped me with my self-confidence. This year I got a state fair trip for performing arts, and when you would think about 4H, you wouldn't think about like performing of 4H, but 4H offers a lot, and 4H, I'm super excited that I'm a part of 4H.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And one thing that they didn't compliment themselves with is that they're incredible role models, and when they go down to state fair, they just shine and they bond with other counties, and other counties will come back to me and talk about how amazing the Benton County youth are and how they step out and they don't just hang out with their own county when they go down to state fair. They bond and they support and they encourage fairgoers and other 4Hers that are there, and we actually have, let's see, we got forty-three livestock kids that are going down, and we have thirty-two general exhibits, and then plus our llama, horse, and dog are all going down as well, so lots of success in there. Our numbers have increased a little bit again now that COVID, kind of coming back from that COVID, so our numbers have come up a little bit slowly but very steadily, and we had a lot of new interest. I shared that with Commissioner Pop during the county fair, that we had more people this year ask about 4H and what it can do for their youth and building, just Morgan is the testament of that, when she talks about she would never be able to be in front of a group of people, and that's just, just a snapshot of all the amazing things that 4H is already doing, so. Yeah, so should I read the proclamation?
Please, please do.
Okay, all right. So Benton County 4H Week proclamation, whereas 4H is America's youth development organization, having supported almost six million youth across the countries thus far, and whereas 4H has helped four hundred and sixty youth this past year in Benton County to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders, and whereas 4H is delivered by cooperative extension, a community of more than a hundred public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing in hands-on projects in areas including health, science, agriculture, and citizenship, and whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible experiences that 4H offers youth or young people and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in Benton County, who work each day to make a positive impact on those around them, and whereas 4H's network of six thousand volunteers and thirty-five hundred professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4Hers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore, we, the Board of Benton County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2nd to the 8th, 2022, as 4H Week throughout Benton County, and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that October 2nd to the 8th, 2022, we would recognize Benton County 4H Week proclamation.
And I'll second that.
Great, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion or anything to add to this?
Thank you so much, Ann.
Yes.
Thank you all for what you do.
That was great to hear from you. Awesome job with the county fair, I hear, and all those state trips, that's great.
And at some point, could we have a picture for the page?
And yes, would they please stick around for a group photo?
Yep. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Group photo. All Commissioners, too, please.
Jacob brought his camera, too.
You guys are probably better at standing shoot. Get them all in there.
Yeah. Like this?
They're here to see you, not... So guys in the front, please take a little bit of... There we go. Excuse me? Thank you. Thanks, Jacob.
Here, we'll do one more. Perfect. I got enough.
If you want your business, central soda. See, hello, that was the sponsor.
Okay, next on the agenda, consider DDA recommendation to create one child support officer lead position and abolish one of the current approved child support officer positions. Who's taking this one? Joanna? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am here to ask that you support and approve Tessa from DDA's recommendation. Last April, the county board approved, under the Human Services Director's request, to have our child support officer areas' job duties reassessed. Tessa's recommendation came back with the need for a child support officer lead position. So her, I mean, I do have copies, if you guys want to see them, of her recommendation here, but I basically put that within the agenda item, that to abolish one of our current positions, child support officer positions, and create a child support officer lead position. The grade evaluation came back as a seven. The current child support officer positions are a five currently. Any questions?
And this is revenue neutral, I'm taking it? Or are we going to...
Probably not.
Well, not necessarily, no. Again, as Joanna mentioned, but I mean, great, sorry. My rough estimate was about fifty, a hundred dollars additional cost.
Is that coming out of?
We just have to increase the base budget twenty-three for that, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pinchot.
It is something that we did send back.
We did.
And it would be, in my opinion, not right of us to not approve it. The only thing I will say is, I believe everybody put in for that.
Well, if it is approved today, a job description would be created and finalized, and it would be an open and promotional position. So it would be posted internally. The applicants would be sort of just like we do any of our other open promotional positions.
No, my guess where I was going with that is, I'm a hundred percent for it, I just hope there's not animosity, because there's, a lot of people are probably qualified for it, you know.
There are two people that put in their appeal that they felt that their expertise or their job duties would fall into that.
Yeah, and I believe when we did the appeal process, there was three of them at that time that went in for this.
One no longer works for Benton County.
Okay.
So now we're down to two.
Now you're down to two. But you're right, Commissioner Pinchot, this is something we discussed.
Yeah.
Yep.
I will move approval.
You want to read that motion, and I would like you to put upon a promotion of the current, I believe you got that written?
Yep, I got it.
Put all that in there, please.
I'll move approval to one new child support lead classification and abolish one child support officer classification as recommended by DDA upon a promotion of a current employee to a lead position.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Joanna, you were cringing. You were cringing at that moment when we were reading that motion?
No, I just couldn't remember what we added.
Okay. Okay, no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next one, consider Wex Health.
And I just should note, it's Tim Hanson from Marsh McLennan has joined us. Yes, we see you up there, Tim, on our screen. Thank you.
I do believe Michelle has logged in for this also. I see her on there.
Yep. Joanna, would you like Tim to start, or you?
I mean, I can at least just read the opening, and then we're going to kind of fall back onto Tim, just to kind of explain this, because it is a unique situation, so.
Thank you.
Wex Health, to be, is Benton County's claim administrator, is what we're requesting, for our HSA, VIBA, and FSA accounts, so all of our medical savings accounts. We've talked through this before, we've started that process. We now have received the ASA agreement for us to sign, which is Exhibit A and B in the packet. Some of the issues that were pending was actually being able to view the master service agreement between MHC and Wex. This morning, I received a draft copy of that. I have been told that ensured that the language that they're still kind of going back and forth on wouldn't reflect any of the, I think he said, three hundred-plus clients that have already signed this ASA agreement. It's more of some of the logistics of the fee schedules if they have special off projects and such. Tim, do you want to speak to it a little bit?
Good morning, Tim. Would you like to speak on this?
Does Mike's green?
Yeah, it's green, but...
Tim, if you're talking, we're not hearing. It appears that your mic is unmuted, but we are not hearing you.
Maybe we should see if anybody else can speak.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Now we can, yes, thank you.
Okay, I am just trying to get connected to my headset here, sorry. Headphones, there we go. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we can.
Please, go ahead.
There we go, and I can even hear you, how wonderful. Thank you for that. Yes, to provide a little additional background, I believe it was three or four years ago when Benton County moved their medical insurance from Health Partners over to Preferred One as part of joining the collaborative. Included in that change was moving these medical spending accounts, FSA, HSA, and VIBA, from the prior broker who had their own third-party administrator, over to a company called Further, which is a Minnesota-based third-party administrator. Well, since that time, Further has been acquired by a national company called Health Equity, and unfortunately, Health Equity does not administer VIBAs at all. So what happened was Benton County was faced with the decision going into this year of what to do with those medical spending account TBA services. Minnesota Health Consortium, which as Joanna mentioned is essentially a broker...
Tim, we just lost you. You might want to try something else besides headset. Maybe you're just the speaker, the microphone on your computer will work for you.
Technology is great when it works, right? And become one of their clients as far as the broker, and Wex would be the third-party administrator for HSA, FSA, and VIBA. So that is what we are looking to get approved today. I think where the challenge that we've run into is, there's two levels of agreements. There's one set of agreements that Joanna mentioned that are between the Minnesota Health Consortium as the broker and Wex. Consider that perhaps the global agreement. Beyond that, what needs to be approved at this meeting, if possible, is the agreements between Benton and Wex. And the challenge we've run into is that there was a request to review the global agreement between the MHC and Wex, and that's the item that has yet to be finalized per Joanna's introductory comments. Is this clear as mud at this point?
Mr. Chair, Tim, it is clear as mud, and actually you broke out on us when you started talking about the state consortium, so we missed a little bit of your presentation there. I don't know if there's something you can highlight at that point or not that we missed.
So that this, by moving into the Minnesota Health Consortium, they essentially become the broker. We can still advise on it, but this appears to be the best fit as opposed to Benton going out and try to find a standalone third-party administrator for those medical spending account services.
Mr. Chair, so, Tim, so if I understand you correctly, there's still part of this agreement that's not complete. Is that, would that be a fair statement?
The master agreement between MHC and Wex, they are still finalizing some of my new details, is my understanding. One thing I do need to point out, however, is any review of that master agreement between the Minnesota Health Consortium and Wex, it is not something that any of the individual members like Benton or the other counties have any say in modifying.
Okay, okay. Michelle, do you have anything to add to this?
I do. So I briefly reviewed the master services agreement. It does look like they've properly cited the authority for purchasing off of a master services agreement, and they do include several of the provisions that we would want to see, data practices, identification, insurance of venue in Minnesota. The one thing is, is that the insurance is only one million, so of course, it's always a consideration that you have to take. Essentially, what Benton County would be doing is signing an adoption agreement, which would adopt the terms of this master services agreement. As a result, since that master services agreement is not complete, what I would do is I would make your approval, if you choose to approve this agreement today, contingent on the execution of that master services agreement. But it does appear to have many of the terms that we would want.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Ms. Michelle, or Joanna, Tim, is there a timeline here? I don't like getting into agreements that aren't complete. I understand that they're close, but...
There is a timeline.
What's the timeline?
Mr. Chair, if I may add, a few weeks ago, they thought this was complete. That's when we received the ASA. They sent for this the final stamp of approval signature, and there was one small detail, as I mentioned earlier, in the project section of that. Now, they received the draft version that Michelle looked at this morning, I received it at six o'clock last night. I am under the understanding, I've talked to Marlo from MHC, who, actually, he's the person they hired to manage this project, he is understanding that this is going to be signed. The effective date of this is nine one. This is why it's come, unfortunately, I mean, this is not a situation I wanted to put any of you in or the board in, but we don't have another board meeting before this goes effective, and monies will be transferred. I mean, our frozen date, the accounts, I believe, is the eighteenth, where, you know, Further will start moving all of that money and trying to start that process. So by delaying that, it would stop usage of employees being able to use these accounts.
Commissioner Pop.
Mr. Chair, I too don't like to have agreements that are not complete, but in this case, I think we're going to have to trust Joanna and Michelle to make sure that we are covered in all those aspects, isn't be my deal.
I would have to agree with that. There's a timeline on this situation.
And we will have disgrunted employees if we don't get this done.
Just remember when you make the motion that you put in contingent on the master agreement.
May I, if I may, does that mean that, the contingent mean that the authority for Monty to sign would not be until we have the finalized agreement, even if it's after nine one?
Michelle?
Well, you could sign it, but the contingency would be that it's not technically executed, so you might want to propose holding off on signing until the master services is created. But once it is, then the chair is authorized to sign the agreement.
Do you...
Does that make sense? I was thinking on the go.
Yeah.
Yes, so motion to authorize the chair and Monty to sign upon the execution of the master services agreement, that's what I would recommend.
Two. Commissioner Gepinski.
Joanna, I would have to assume that other counties are in the same position we are right now.
Yes, many of them have...
And I think the master services agreement is going to have to be signed in the next week or so. I think there's going to be a push, or do you see an issue coming? And maybe Tim can also join in.
If I may, before Tim starts, I mean, the timeline it's being under, so now MHC just got it back from, there's, it was already a final review, it's now a new final review. How long it takes to actually get it signed and pushed through, I am unsure that we can do that before the nine one. I don't know. The, I do know that, from what this Marlo that I had talked about said, that there's over three hundred different clients that have already signed the ASA agreement, knowing and just putting the trust that MHC is doing their job with Wex to make sure that this master service agreement gets put into place. So it isn't, I mean, Benton County's one aspect of it.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I guess my concern is, is how do we adopt an agreement that doesn't legally exist yet? So that's why I've recommended making it contingent, and hopefully that we get that rectified prior to nine one.
So, yeah, you might want to propose holding off on signing until the master services agreement. But once it is, then the chair is authorized to sign the agreement.
Do you...
Does that make sense?
Mr. Chair.
I was thinking on the go.
Yeah.
Yes, so motion to authorize the chair and Monte to sign upon the execution of the master services agreement. That's what I would recommend.
To... Commissioner Kapinski.
Joanna, I would have to assume that other counties are in the same position we are right now.
Yes, many of them have...
And I think their, the master services agreement is going to have to be signed in the next week or so. I, I think there's going to be a push, or do you see an issue coming? And maybe Tim can also join in.
If I may, before Tim starts, I mean, the timeline it's being under, so now MHC just got it back from theirs, it was already a final review. It's now a new final review. How long it takes to actually get it signed and pushed through? I am unsure that we can do that before the 9/1. I don't know. The, I do know that, from what this Marlo that I had talked about said, that there's over 300 different clients that have already signed the ASA agreement, knowing and just putting the trust that MHC is doing their job with WEX to make sure that this master service agreement gets put into place. So it isn't, I mean, Benton County's one aspect of it.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I guess my concern is, is how do we adopt an agreement that doesn't legally exist yet? So that's why I've recommended making it contingent. And hopefully, that we get that rectified prior to 9/1.
Mr. Chair, just for review, Michelle, can you walk me through again the short answer of what happens if this gets tabled till September 6?
And that could be problematic for transfer.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm really confused. If this master service agreement doesn't get signed, how could they start moving money September 1?
Right.
They can't.
They can't.
Tim, do you want to answer that? I know when I inquired about it, they said they were moving forward with this.
Even without a signed agreement?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, that would be out of my depth. And this is where the, why I wanted to kind of hammer home. Obviously, we work with Benton itself on a medical plan as part of this transition to the MHC. We are effectively out of the business of brokers, so we don't, we can still get some information, I can up for date and get in touch with the right people, but I don't have the view behind the curtain, if you will. So, I mean, that's certainly something we can bring back to Marlo and attempt to get an answer ASAP, because I, you know, I, on the surface, I agree, it's a valid question, how do we sign an agreement that's not valid yet?
Language used in the email that I received is that, that 300-plus clients have moved forward as a bridge. They've signed this saying that, yes, they're going, because it's an agreement to adhere to that master service agreement. It's, yeah, I mean, I guess, we can put a contingent on, but if it's not signed by 9/1, I'm not sure how I, you know, at that point, then we would be stopping the transfer and working with the money moving to WEX. They're comfortable moving forward, WEX's, with this and continuing the transfer, because it takes four to six weeks.
Mr. Chair, would members consider a special meeting? I just, I'm not, I'm not in favor of signing an agreement that we...
I do know that are...
I don't have finished, even though I realize what it could cause, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
I, I would be up for a special meeting on this, but I do know our, our, our options are very limited. And really, this is our option. So, what are, what are some of the other people that have signed this? And I don't want to be follow the leader, but what, is there other counties, cities?
I don't know that, he just said, you know, 300-plus clients. They have hundreds and hundreds of clients they're working with. And he, in the email that I sent, asking what are other, you know, options or entities doing besides our collaboration? And all of us in the collaboration are going to the board today, because we just got these documents. But there are lots of entities moving away from Further to WEX. And he said, a lot of them are accepting the bridge, knowing that what we're agreeing to is to adhere to that agreement. I understand it doesn't have that signed out. It may happen next week, but I'm concerned that if it doesn't, and it isn't signed...
We've been on meetings for the last eight, nine months on this. So, and it's definitely not Joanna that's holding it up, it's, it's all the other side.
I do know other boards I sit on moved over to WEX, too.
I guess...
Commissioner Pop.
I was more concerned about the collaborative, or you, you have no knowledge if, you know, most of them meet today, if they're all going to sign it.
No, I mean, it's a mixed bag. I think all of us are going to, all of us HR directors are going to the board saying, I don't have a Plan B, you know, and not having access to, employees having access to their accounts, to me, is not an option.
Right. Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead.
Michelle, we're going to need, we really need your direction on this one, though.
Well, okay, so here's, again, I don't know how you sign up on an agreement that doesn't technically exist yet.
Right.
So that is why I'm recommending a contingent approval upon approval of that MSA. The option, then, if we're getting close to that 9/1 date, and we don't know anything from WEX and the MHC, MCH, then at that point, maybe we consider a special meeting to discuss the options.
Yep.
Commissioner Kapinski, that's what you were going to suggest?
That's exactly what I was going to suggest, is let's let the time play out, and, and if we get to, get to, you know, five days before the first, then we have to call a special meeting, and...
You need a three-day notice, Monte? What do you need for a notice for a special meeting?
Three days. Do you need this in one motion, or... You need, you need Exhibit A and B, I guess?
I combined them into one motion.
Yes, you did, that is correct, yeah. Just make sure you put the contingency of the master agreement plan.
I will make a motion that the Benton County Board of Commissioners authorize and sign Exhibit A, or MHC-WEX agreement. Exhibit B, employee participation and adoption agreement, verba, direct service, contingent upon the master agreement being signed.
I'll second that.
Mr. Chair, for discussion, Commissioner Kapinski, just to clarify, that motion, would you consider putting a date in there? I mean, I want to make sure we're covered.
Sure.
If we have to get a three-day notice and get a special meeting, we need to have a drop-dead date on this.
Why don't we say by August 25?
Okay.
That gives us seven days, basically.
The other key to that motion, I think we need to amend, was we need to have the board approve and delegate authority to Monte to sign because of electronic signature, and WEX's format is one signature.
I will make that change to my motion.
I will amend the second to...
To the...
The motion.
To the August 25, and Monte...
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, does everybody understand that motion?
Should I clarify that, or...
Yes, motion maker, please clarify that.
So, basically, I'm, I'm authorizing the board, which now we have authorized Monte to electronically sign the WEX agreement, the employee participation agreement, contingent based on master agreement being signed. And if it is not signed by August 25, we come back, we, we set a special board meeting.
Commissioners, Commissioner Johnson.
I'm ready for you to call the question.
Any further discussion on this? If not, I will call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next, Roxanne, discussion on utility-scale solar projects.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, in light of recent news of a utility-scale solar project being proposed in Benton County, I know there's been conversations between Monte, myself, and Michelle, and we wanted to clarify the county's role in the permitting of, of a project of this scale. So Michelle had drafted, and I believe it's in your packets, memorandum, several pages long, outlining the county's roles and responsibilities with this scale of a project. And Minnesota had passed Minnesota Statute 216E, which regulates large electric power generating facilities. And what happens is the state takes over the permitting and regulatory authority for projects of this scale. This particular one is between 100 and 200 megawatts. So it's significantly large in size. And it, so such permits through the state shall supersede and preempt all zoning, building, and land use rules, regulations, or ordinances programm... pro, yes, by regional, county, local, and special purpose government. So essentially, we are participating, much like the public would participate in public hearings. Now, the applicant is required to provide notice to the county 90 days prior to submitting an application to the Public Utilities Commission. We have not received notice, and from my understanding is, I, I think they are still trying to sign a number of agreements with property owners to place, so that they have the appropriate amount of property under contract before they move forward with any sort of site planning. So I think there are little ways out. Now, Chris and I had had conversations with them, I think it was in early July. I think they were predicting a quicker permitting process than, process than what is reality. I know that they wanted to meet with the county board in the fall, and that they would be getting that permitting process in, in the near future with start dates of 2023. I, I don't know how feasible that is. I just had recent discussions, or, or an email update from, well, it's National Grid Renewables, which was Duronimo Energy for the Langola Project. And we began discussions with them in March of 2019. They still do not have the permit to move forward. And from what they're telling me is that they have a 2024 date as the earliest potential construction start, and a 2025 is the earliest commercial operation. And that's due to being studied by what is called Mid-Continent Independent Systems Operator. And it's the transmission interconnection process, which is becoming a major delay for all proposed projects in the region. So now, if this one that started in 2019 is, is under major delays to the point where they may not begin construction until 2024 with connection and operation in 2025, I would find it hard to believe that Next Era would be able to begin any sooner than that. But I don't have a full understanding of the permitting process for this size of a utility. So there may be a different process that they're going through that I'm unaware of. I don't know that entire process. But I just wanted to bring this up to date, bring you all up to, up to speed on where I am on this. I have sent at least three separate emails to the project coordinator without response as to setting up a meeting to bring the board up to date on, on where this project is. I have not received a response.
Mr. Chair, Roxanne, you know, we looked and reviewed a potential map that showed over 4,000 acres identified as part of this project. Have that been updated at all? Have you seen any new areas?
I have had zero communication. They have not responded to any of my emails.
I would assume the same for Chris, right? You haven't heard me? Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pop.
The, the only thing that you can kind of go by is that the 100-megawatt up in Langola Township was only comprising 800 acres. So there are 4,000 acres. If they're going maximum of 200 megawatts, that would still be 1,600 acres. So I think the 4,000 acres, from what I understand, is pretty vague in area, and, and some of that has, one of the landowners has already told me he's not interested anymore.
Just to kind of tag on to that, from our conversations with them, it sounded like they needed to have a certain number of acres under contract before they could even move forward with planning. Once they have that magic number, let's say it's 4,000 acres that needs to be under contract, from that, they'll select around 1,400 acres of the best land that makes the most sense to, for their product.
So I'm assuming they're still waiting on the landowners, then, right, Commissioner Pop?
I would, that's what I would then bet.
We probably get more information from local landowners than we do from the company at this point.
Yeah.
Well, and it sounds like that needle's moving to potential other landowners in different areas, too. So it's ever-moving pendulum here.
This can be a long process.
As soon as I can get them in front of the board, I will do so. As I've said, I, my emails have gone unanswered.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. My question would be on the environmental side. Have there been any studies with these other places that have had this load that they're talking about? As to if it's, if there's any radiation, if how safe they are, and are they recyclable? What about the impact afterwards for disposal? What studies have been done about?
And at this point, we're not even at the level to ask those questions. But when we do get to that point, it will be something that we need to address with the Public Utilities Commission.
And, Mr. Chair, all those issues, I sat on all of the stuff from the regal one up there. And the environmental impact study and all that is a mandatory deal from the MPC.
PUC.
PUC. PUC. And I, the one issue they did skirt pretty, pretty bad was the, what the panels are reclaiming, or whatever.
How much of it's recyclable? They can never get to that point.
No, you can never get to that point. I think as, as you, what you read and what you see, it's better and better all the time. I think as you go forward, it'll be probably okay.
Yep, with modern technology and changes. Okay, anything else on that?
Not on solar, no.
Okay, go ahead, next.
Okay, so just a brief update on the Mississippi State Cloud One watershed, One Plan. The Clearwater River Watershed District has decided not to participate in this plan. And so, and they are a required partner in that. So our group needs to petition Bowser and request that we are still able to move forward with this plan. Early communications with Bowser indicate that this, this should go through, that they, they are likely to approve for the group to move forward with the plan. But I was asked to bring that forward to the board, and I believe Jerry may have spoke with you, Commissioner Johnson?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You had anything to mention on that?
And Kendra said the same thing. That's kind of where I was left at, so...
Yep. And then, in the future, if we need to make changes to the agreement, because it does reference Clearwater River Watershed District being a partner, we will do that, but at this point, we first need to make sure that we can continue with the plan.
So, Commissioner Johnson, they don't want any part of the planning or anything? Or they, they just don't want to be on the final draft?
I don't think they were wanting to be involved from this point forward. They had, you know, concerns that was raised at the policy committee.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think that they...
They don't want to be on policy committee or nothing?
They went out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can be on, you know, from the Rum River, you can be on policy committee, and then when the final...
And they've been on the policy committee. But when, when the agreement was presented to them, they weren't excited about that.
Because we have three, I believe we have three participants in Rum River then, elected not to be part of it.
They just don't qualify for the Bowser.
Well, that's not true neither.
Isn't that what they were implying?
I don't know, yes.
Well, and this came from their watershed district, not necessarily from Wright County.
And watershed districts are quite a bit different than counties or sovereign waters.
I didn't hear that from Wright County, I heard it from Clearwater Watershed.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Roxanne.
Next, Robert Cornelius, Human Services Director. Consider a request to submit data analyst position with David Brown and Associates. Bob?
Good morning.
Good morning.
As we spoke last Tuesday about this topic, I had promised you that I would bring it before the board at a later date. Well, this is the later date. I just had five quick notes here that I wanted to talk about real quick. This position has seen a significant increase in the expertise level from data entry to visual basic programming. When we submitted this the first time, the position was new, and I think we just completely underestimated what this position was going to grow into. The value of systematically working through all of our programs for return on investment and establishing performance measures will have a significant increase, or impact, on our human services department going forward. The position will take on some supervisory responsibilities of the data unit itself. And the use of performance and data management tools, I believe, will be a benefit countywide. And there is urgency to reevaluate this position due to a quickly developing market demand. So I would ask that the board grant approval to submit this to TDA.
Mr. Chair, I'll grant that motion to submit this to HS for data analyst position for a reevaluation.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schlangen.
The data analysis, is it the same person that's been doing our data right now?
Yes, there is the same person would be in both positions, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Just a clarification.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Thank you, Bob, for bringing this forward. I, I think this is definitely worth looking into.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I got a question.
Commissioner Pop.
So coding, when, when you said identifying, correcting coding errors, coding errors cost us money, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so...
That was, I think that was the pretense of this whole moving into a phase of data. And I believe that we are actually on the cutting edge of this. And I believe that we are actually on the cutting edge of this with involving data with our decision making. And that's why I think the market is currently being rapidly developed, just because I think others are seeing the value in doing this as well.
They will pick your good people.
Yeah, I would request that you bring this up our next board meeting, probably under Human Services, about an update of how it's going, the coding process and everything, of what he's doing.
Yes, that is scheduled on our COW meeting for September 12th. So Human Services COW meeting. Normally, it's the first Monday of every month, but because that is, uh, oh.
A holiday?
I am open to rescheduling. Yeah, because of the holiday, yes. So I can hang around and come back if we need to talk about changing the COW date.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? If not, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, motion carries. Thank you. At this point in time, I will turn it over to our Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning again, Bob.
Good morning.
Called order our Human Services Board. Is there any changes or amendments to our agenda?
No.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve our agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, is carried. Move on to consent agenda. It looks like we have one item on there approving or amending the Human Services meeting minutes from August 2nd.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second to approve those minutes. Any further discussion regarding those minutes? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, that's carried. Anything else, Bob?
I had one thing that I wanted to ask you. I believe you received that memo that you asked Sandy Schoberg for regarding the client that we had that could be very costly. So you should have gotten that last week.
That's correct. Yeah, well, we just provided hard copy this morning, Bob.
Oh, okay, so you haven't had a chance to look it over yet, okay. I just wanted to know if that was...
Got it, yeah.
We'll take that up in two weeks, next board meeting then.
All right, anything else, I guess as long as you're here, Bob. If we've got a conflict on September 12th, I mean, we better get that out now and just get it fixed.
Wait and see, it's going to depend on what happens further down this meeting.
Okay. So we may be having...
I will be...
You'll be gone?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I will be gone. Be out of state.
Well, we, I guess we could deal with it on our September 6th County Board meeting then, if we need to.
Oh, reschedule?
Reschedule, yeah. If we need to reschedule, we can deal with it then.
I would be honest with you, I'd prefer all of you to be here. I think it's an important topic, so.
Well, why don't we, why don't we talk about it on September 6th and we'll set a date?
That's great.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll turn it back over to our Board Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're repeating our regular board meeting. Next up, Chris Byrd. Notification of Federal Highway Administration Final Rule Regarding Pavement Marking.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. I brought this because I thought this was very timely, considering the very last board meeting, we had a lengthy discussion about striping. And thanks to the board, identified additional, a little bit of additional funds to take care of some additional striping that we need to get done. And what we needed to get done this year was striping that you could barely see during the day. Well, so federal highways has come down with a rulemaking. And what was attached to the agenda packet is the Federal Register, where federal government posts new rules and laws before they become in effect. And basically, this new rule that's coming down to the federal highways is saying that we're going to have to start maintaining a minimum reflectivity standard. That means not only can you see the striping during the day, you need to be able to see it at night. There's been some language for a while. It's been a requirement on all interstate roads. What's happening now is it's coming down to all public roads with a speed limit of posting of, I think, 35 miles or more. So that covers nearly all roads that are open to the public. There's a lot of city streets and maybe some township roads that don't have striping. Maybe they're posted less than that. But this really is going to affect all of our paved roads going forward. So I just wanted to mention, things that govern striping, signing, is governed in Minnesota by the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD. We sometimes get lazy and abbreviate it, call it the Mutt Manual. It's this big, this is actually an older version. We no longer print it out because it requires so many pages. So we just reference it online, the Mutt Manual. So some of these things in Mutt are law, like for us. Say, for example, an intersection requires a stop sign. It's a law for us that that stop sign has to be in octagonal shape. It has to have a red backing with white lettering on that. That's law. We could not, if we put up something contrary to that, we would be liable for any accidents or things like that, and could be cited. So Minnesota has actually been preparing for this. And in this manual, there's a Section 3A.3 that they've actually left blank. It says this section, this is from the most recent version, "This section is reserved for future text based on federal highway rulemaking." So I just mentioned that to say, we don't have all the answers yet. We do know that the first deadline coming up to us is four years from September. All public agencies will have to come up with a plan on how we manage this. Several years ago, we had to do the same thing with signs. We came up with a sign management plan. And basically, our policy says that we're based on the estimated useful life of that sign. Meaning, manufacturer of that reflective sheeting says that should last 10 years. In 10 years, we're going to be replacing that sign. So that's the first step for us. We're going to be looking to our state, Minnesota, and MinDOT to help us provide some additional guidance on what that is. There's probably going to be some numbers coming out and what that standard is that we're going to do. But just in the future, we're going to have to be replacing striping probably sooner and more often than we have been in the past.
We won't have to change our striping material though, will we?
That, I mean, this is going to probably drive innovation. It may lead to us exploring different type of materials based on cost effectiveness. If it's a more expensive material, but it lasts longer, maybe that's something we're going to have to explore. Striping has basically two main components. You have the liquid component, and then you have glass beads that you put in it that may, that make it reflective at night. We may be exploring all those kinds of things, different sizes of glass beads, different brands of glass beads. So, yeah, a lot of things that we may have to explore in the future that are different than what, how we've done it in the past.
Are we going to get any federal money for this?
In our industry, we sometimes call this an unfunded mandate. So I don't think it's a coincidence that, you know, King, we just got this big federal reauthorization bill, and now we have some new requirements to meet. So I don't see, you know, a direct appropriation or a direct, I should say, a direct allotment coming to Benton County to maintain this, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schlangen.
I was at the MinDOT yesterday with, they were showing off their vehicles that are doing the testing for automated...
Yeah, the autonomous, what they call the CAV, Connected and Autonomous Vehicles.
So they, and they were concerned about the striping on the roads and the vehicles getting confused. So there might be something that comes down that we all have to follow.
You're right. If you look at the posting, the federal rulemaking, it does mention this. This is one of their goals. You know, the main goal is to increase nighttime safety on the roadways. But that is a subsequent goal, is have good pavement marking, because some of these new connected automated vehicles use cameras that are reading that stripe to find where the edge of the road is or where the edge of the lane is. There's a lot of our roads that those vehicles probably not, would not do well on because it's hard. And that's a big question in Minnesota. What do you do in the winter when you have whiteout conditions, when the road looks just like a farm field next to you? A lot of testing still needs to be done. But, yeah, that's another goal of this requirement, is try to prepare for those vehicles coming on our roads in the not-too-distant future, actually.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gopinski.
I think you just like saying the Mutt Manual.
Yeah.
It's a Mutt because it's a combination of a lot of different things in there.
Yeah.
More to come for that one then, I guess, right?
Yes.
Okay, is that all you have for that one, Chris?
That's all I had for that, just an informational item.
Okay, great. Next, Transportation Alliance, Washington DC fly-in. Chris?
All right. So Transportation Alliance is a membership organization in which Benton County is a member. It's an organization that tries to identify and bring about additional funds for road authorities. I think nearly, if not all, the counties in Minnesota are members of this. Every year, they make a trip to Washington DC. I think actually the week that they go is known as Transportation Week out there. I think a lot of states have similar organizations that are out in Washington DC on that time. So they have this event coming up in September, and the idea is to get some of our congressional delegation out in front of us, and maybe we get some one-on-one meetings with them or staff to talk to them about projects that we have in our area that could really benefit some federal funding. What's different about this year as opposed to previous years, federal government has created congressional delegated spending again. In the past, that's maybe been called earmarks or some other name. But now, our congresspeople, our senators and representatives have the ability to write bills that delegate or direct appropriations to specific agencies and entities. So I think that's why maybe there's a greater push this year as opposed to years in the past. So we have some projects that, you know, identified in the APO that we've longed for federal money to help accomplish those. One of them that's coming to mind is our CASA 29 Extension Project, you know, Monty, that's been, since the early 2000s, he's been talking about that. He's been probably involved with it a lot longer than I have. That's something that maybe we want to consider going out there as part of this group and, you know, at least getting that in front of our Congress delegation and say, you know, remember Benton County, and see if there's any way we can get some funding for that, so.
Yeah, how this process started is that when I started working with the city and the school with CASA 1 and CASA 3, Corridor 29 was brought up about this too, of how to control the traffic and move the traffic around the school instead of through the school with CASA 1. And that's when I brought Commissioner Gopinski on board in his district for 29. And with the APO Board. Mr. Gopinski, want to speak a little bit more on that?
Yeah, so obviously, this goes way back to 2000, early 2000s, when Benton County originally appropriated and had a big plan for 29. And I think you had mentioned, like, 10 years ago, we bought the right-of-way.
Yeah, we finalized a lot of the right-of-way in 2012, so.
Coincidentally, this has been part of the St. Cloud Regional Belt Line for like 30-plus years. And as legislatures have known about this for a long time, they kind of just shrug their shoulders sometimes. Nothing has moved forward.
Correct.
And with all this additional money that is ready to be appropriated, they're looking for shovel-ready projects, which Benton County is. They're looking for things that really come into play, school district. We got a major school district that is going to be affected by this, what Sock Rapids Rice High School. Safety from being on the fire department, one of our officers, other than Highway 10, that's, that is our deadliest stretch of road on County Road 1 to 29. So we've got safety concerns. Then we've got this being for like 30, 30 years, being on the APO's radar for the Belt Line. And it also connects to a regional airport. If there's ever a chance that we could get funding, I think it's right now. I proposed all this at the APO last week, and it was absolutely unanimous. Matter of fact, others are, if this is passed today of going out there, others are looking at potentially joining us just to push this project. I mean, we've got Stearns County, Sherburne County, the APO full backing, all the cities. We got to go around to the townships, make sure they're on board with this. But the school will be on board. I mean, we've got full, well, yeah, we have full support of all these different agencies out there. I don't, if there's ever a sure, sure time to go out there, I think it's right now.
And we have a regional airport too now.
Yeah.
All three counties.
If you, you know, and your shot is probably as good as it's ever been.
Oh, yeah.
Get this done.
Mr. Chair, I think important highlight there is you hit it on the head, it's shovel-ready.
Yeah.
Ready to go. And that's what they're looking for.
Correct. Spend the money now instead of later. When is that Transportation Alliance week?
September 20th through 22nd.
Okay.
So I think that's the third week in September. 20th is a Tuesday, I believe. It may be a board meeting day.
Yep.
So I think it would be great if we had a couple commissioners that would be willing to go out there. I think commissioners are more effective with bringing that message home.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I also agree that our current engineer carries a lot of weight in the state of Minnesota. And I think that if we were going to send a commissioner and our highway engineer, we'd probably get, I mean, you can't go anywhere without hearing about the good things that Chris Byrd does. So I think he's pretty valuable.
I know that our neighbors in St. Cloud are going, Stearns County, Commissioner Persky and Clark.
Clark are going too.
As well as Jody.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chair, I would assume Congressman Emmer is going to have arms wide open with St. Cloud in the heart of his district to accept people to come out and testify in regards to that.
If you look at this project, it touches, let's just say, seven cities, three counties. It's huge for the central Minnesota school districts.
I believe even, wasn't MICA, the recent MICA meeting, weren't they encouraging the counties to be out there right now too?
Who's the guy for MICA on this?
Novak, Steve Novak.
Steve. So on MICA, they said if there's ever a chance to go out there and look at funding for projects that are shovel-ready, now is the time. And he encouraged everybody.
Yep, WSB too, Ron Bray saying the same thing too. Now is the time to push for this.
Mr. Chair, is the APO going to be represented there also then? Their executive director?
I don't believe Brian is going at this point, because they've got a set one-on-one in October. The APO goes out there. And it'll be Chair Commissioner Persky from Stearns and Gibson going out there at this point. But Persky did want to join us on this meeting, as well as potentially another commissioner from another county.
Okay.
Commissioner Pop?
Well, I was just wondering if they have a one-on-one, if we would be maybe better to split us, you know, one commissioner then and one commissioner with Brian Gibson and then.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
We did actually talk about that, and we believe that our best bet is right now. And then if they, if it's really becoming like apparent that this could happen, then they might ask one of us to go in October again too. So, but this, that was talked about, and we all agreed that hitting it twice would be the way to go. So I think our plan is to get letters of support from literally every city, the airport authority, townships, school districts, counties.
Well, and this is one of those rare situations where we've got a major project in the APO that's going to happen in Benton County and have the support of local counties and locals.
Correct.
So that's...
And on MICA, Senator Emmer, basically, all of his funding was in the metro area. They have a ton of them that are appropriated there, and there's really been nothing out state yet. So this is a good opportunity for him to take care of a lot of area, I think.
Yeah.
It's got to be a great plan, but this is a plan that's been in the works for 30, 30 years.
So I know somebody from Benton County that's going out on 11th to the 14th for a different issue. And she has really good contacts with our two senators, and they are, they are meeting, I talked to her yesterday, they are meeting one-on-one with Emmer, Tina Smith, and Kobushar. And if we get any kind of proposals or things that we need her to sit down and have a conversation with them, she will do that in order to like prepare them a little better or whatever. And I think we need to recognize that she carries a huge amount of weight with Senator Kobushar.
Okay, absolutely.
And it, I mean, huge amount of weight.
Any weight, any, anything that can be done on the front side is good for all of us. So, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gopinski, or Chris, what's the, what's the proposal?
So the intention right now was Chris, myself, and Commissioner Gopinski, right? Is that what you had in the...
Yeah, I guess maybe just we got a consensus that there's an agreement that, yeah, maybe that we should go.
It's up to the board. We know Chris has got to go for sure. You know, then it's up to really the board if you want two of us or if you want one of us to go.
I'm on the Transportation Alliance Board.
That is correct. We've been doing this internally though with the APO and with the city of Stock Rapids and with the high school on this project.
Well, I think a lot of, I was just going to add that we had that Mayhew Lake road study, it's still underway. We don't have the final report.
Still going through.
Through that study, it kind of brought about the importance again of building the 29 corridor, so.
So it wraps around, get the traffic off CASA 1.
Typically, Monty, when we do this, we do airfare and hotel, right?
Of course. All of your expenses would be.
Well, I guess I would go with airfare and hotel and anything else, Uber, meals, and that would be personal expense.
Well, I mean, that's the decision of the board. I mean, our policy certainly allows that board members could be reimbursed for all necessary reasonable expenses.
That's the policy that other organizations use when they go, is that airfare and hotel are paid the 11th through the 14th. That's the policy we're using for Farmers Union.
Is that a motion?
No, that's just a comment.
Chris, where's the funding coming from?
Well.
At least your portion, I guess.
Yeah, we do have a small budget for training and meetings and stuff that require travel in the road and bridge fund, so. Yeah, plane tickets are a big item and in rooms, yeah. It's not a, Washington DC is not a cheap town to stay in, so.
Mr. Chair, I also want to assure that the rest of the board, we're not going out there on a whim either. Our plan that we're working on right now is having a complete laid-out booklet for them on why this is a good project. I mean, from how much it's going to roughly cost to the different legs that it would happen in, all the way down to what economic development would benefit.
Correct.
Safety and have a section in this book for them to have at when we show up, but then have a teaser a week prior to us going out there so that they know why we're coming.
And I think it's one of those things, there's going to be other people out there saying, you know, me, me, me. We want to make sure, yeah, Benton County doesn't get forgotten, so.
But we will have time to be one-on-one with.
Yeah, there is an opportunity, meetings. I have asked the Transportation Alliance to help us set up those meetings, those contacts, so with their staff and assistants, so.
Commissioner Pop?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we send the county engineer, Commissioner Kapinski and Commissioner Hyman to the Transportation Alliance fly-in. I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. So Chris, your portion will be coming out of your fund?
Yeah, we can talk more about where that's coming from, Monty, I guess, so.
Once you've already, I can follow up, so.
Okay, any further discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Monty?
So we'll get with Chris and we'll understand if we need to make our own travel arrangements or whether we'll have assistance from Transportation Alliance, et cetera, et cetera. We won't bog your meeting down now with that, but we'll talk, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Oh, Chris, one other thing I have for you.
Yeah?
So I did not make it to the Sartell meeting last night, but I guess the old Verso site, they took over?
I do, but I saw some correspondence about that too, yeah. So the portion, interesting though, the portion west of the tracks is what the city purchased. So between the tracks and our Benton Drive, County Road 33, is still, what I understand, under ownership of Aim Development with a lease agreement with Solid Rock Church, I think it is. So that's not owned by the city, so. Yeah, you recall, we talked about that, well, some of you may recall, we talked about that on our road tour, they wanted to change that access.
Are you still working on that with the city of Sartell with that access?
Yeah, we haven't had any correspondence in over a month regarding that, but I assume that they would still want to pursue something, but, so further discussions will need to be had regarding that access point.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Any commissioners?
Mr. Chair, Chris, while you're here, maybe just give us a brief update on County 51 Bridge Replacement that's coming up and is going to be involved in our other detours.
Yeah, very good, thank you. So next week, planning on Monday, that being closed down and contractor shortly thereafter start removing that structure on 51. This is the one just east of State Highway 25 in that swamp area. That'll be replaced with a box culvert. And then, yeah, there'll be a signed detour around that. That's kind of critical, we've got to get that replaced. We had it scheduled for this year, but now it's becoming more critical because just north of that structure is where the City of Foley sewer line ties into their existing system. So, and then at the same time, County Road 66 north of Highway 23, that's a gravel road because it's the same contractor doing both of those, will be closing next week as well. And since we're removing that structure, the road will be completely closed and there'll be a signed detour.
66 or 67?
67, yeah, I'm sorry. 66 is a paved road, 67 is a gravel road, correct.
And then also, what's the timeline for the bridge farther east on 51 then?
Yeah, so that's now, that's like a 2024, 2025 schedule, so we're working on getting that design. We just select an engineering consultant to design plans for us. That'll happen this fall and in the winter. And then, yeah, we do have federal money for that, but that, yeah, the federal money doesn't come to us until federal fiscal year '24.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chris? Great, thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Next, it'll be my item. Discussion regarding a possible county commissioner policy handbook. I asked for this my very first month when I became a commissioner, do we have anything on file, any handbook at all? Looking at other counties, they do have a policy book on file for commissioners. So I brought this up for discussion. Commissioners, I brought this up for discussion.
Sounds like a good idea.
I think we absolutely need it.
I do know Monty has one on hand from a different county, and I'm sure there's other counties we can get a different handbook from and adopt it to the Benton County if we so choose to.
Mr. Chair, Monty, would that be an electronic file that we could review or is it a hard copy?
Sure. I need to get the latest and greatest version from Metzright County, so I'll take that from Lee Kelly electronically.
Okay, is there something we'd like to do?
An absolute more.
There's consensus space, yes?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you for that. Next, commissioner meeting updates.
Mr. Chair, I could start if you'd like, we'll keep this short and sweet as I know we have people here waiting to get into our ditch meeting, so. I had the privilege on August 3rd at the county fair to recognize our current 22 Farm Family Year, Jeremy and Kristy Blank, so that was always, it's always a great opportunity to recognize a family. August 8th, we had our broadband subcommittee meeting. Commissioner Kapinski was there, we're moving ahead with those projects and just trying to keep things in front of us. Also had the opportunity on August 11th to sit on the canvassing board after the primary election, and that went very smoothly. We randomly picked out two precincts, Maywood Township was one of them, and Commissioner Schlangen, do you recall this second, it was a precinct in Stock Rapids, I believe?
Yeah.
And so we went through those, everything checked out fine, so that took us about a half an hour. So that was an interesting, my first time sitting on the canvassing board. And then also last week, we had our planning commission meeting, just a couple quick highlights there. If you're familiar with the old Tim's Tower area over on County 33, he is now leasing that facility out. It sounds like a company by the name of Leaf Guard will be in there, so that'll be good. We also approved an additional solar permit, community solar energy system, which is over just south of Papa Creek on County 3. If you recall, near the landwear pit there now, there's a solar array there. This one would be just to the east of it on kind of the same parcel. That's owned by Eugene and Shirley Rudolph, so that was approved. So that's the highlight from the planning commission, that's all I have, thank you.
I missed most of my meetings except for one because I'm board chair of that meeting, Career Solutions, and basically, we just went through contracts and adopting. I'm going to look to adopt new bylaws. That's all I had.
I can go. We had the MICA meeting, a lot of stuff came out, that was probably the most informational MICA meeting I've been a part of, that we just talked about the transportation, Steve talked quite a bit about the fly-in and everything like that. The other thing that was brought up is how all the boards, county boards are upset with the lack of legislature moving forward.
Yeah.
And they're contributing, most boards are contributing 50% of their levy increases due to legislators not doing their job down there. So everybody's claiming that their levies are going to be very, it's going to be larger than usual because none of this funding came through and it's not coming through. So that one of the highlights of the MICA meeting.
I heard Commissioner Kapinski, I heard through the grapevine, 7% to 10% levy increases.
Just going to ask, what are they sharing?
Just because of that.
They're large, so. The next one was the APO meeting. We covered that earlier, but there was a lot of good stuff that went on that. It just happened to be where Mindot was there and going over a bunch of this stuff, so they got to hear this whole County 29 deal and, perfect timing, if you will, but a lot of time was spent on 29. Actually, the 29 project in Benton County got put on their three top APO projects for the coming year, so it also shows support when we fly into DC.
All right, I want to elaborate on that. Commissioner Kapinski and myself really pushed this really hard for the last three months with 29, CASA 1, and CASA 3.
Yep.
You know, with the school and the city, so this is pretty huge.
This could be absolutely huge, I mean, the money's there.
And the support we're getting from the outside counties is just huge.
Yeah. The next thing is, is the broadband, I forgot to ask Chris what he found out from Mindot on that side of things, but the broadband's moving forward, we got to keep that pedal down, so.
When are we going to put fiber in the ground? Why keep asking this, but when are we going to put fiber?
We just, we got to wait for the water or the force main from Foley to get past the area. We don't want to have it dug up when they're doing their project. There's really nothing that we can do because even the providers that we're getting are going to be in 23, 24 timeframe of.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Kapinski, if I could add, still dealing with Mindot in regards to their project that's kind of alongside with us and trying to hash through those agreements.
Yep. And there is a positive thing that came out last week, I think Amanda sent an email around, Monty, the Ardoff ruling came down that.
Came from Doug Dawson.
Okay, yeah, so that the Ardoff ruling came down and they did throw out the.
LTD broadband.
LTD and stuff like that.
That's good.
Yeah, that's a major victory there.
Yeah, so our projects can 100% move forward with, and they qualify for border-to-border now and everything, so.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I got.
Okay, on the 12th, on Friday, we had all the interviews for the newly-created position for the tri, or the quad county now. And we interviewed four. It took from roughly 8:00 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon. We ended up with a candidate that has not, that they're going to offer the position. We had three quality candidates and one borderline candidate. So we ended up with a candidate that we're going to offer the position to, but no word to feel accepted or not.
And this is Small Farms Local Foods coordinator?
Yeah, Small Farms Local Foods. And they'll be office-based out of Little Falls. So we'll see what happens if they accept. We do have a one and a two. They're going to do background checks on both, but I'm pretty sure, knowing the one, I would bet he's going to accept that position. And then on Saturday, they had their Lake Association annual meeting, and they had reports on the lake, on what, actually, they had a report on the sales of lake property, how fast they go when they're available now considering what it used to be. But the lake is doing fine and everything like that. I guess one of the concerns I had is that we probably need to look at is that they use the Lakeview property for their annual meeting, and we charge them for that. I mean, you know, they're trying to raise enough money so they can operate this, what do they call, harvesters that they bought? They had a, you know, they had a silent auction and all this, and then we go and charge them 125 bucks. Maybe in the future, we could waive that somehow, you know, and just let them be there because they're doing a lot of things that help that part of the county as far as property taxes and everything else that goes.
Makes sense.
125 bucks ain't a huge amount for them, but it's not a big deal for us neither.
Is that something the park board would take up upon?
Yeah, we could, well, I, yeah, I guess.
Because they're the ones.
Well, property maintenance is the one.
They're the ones that set the.
Yeah, property maintenance is the one that charges it.
Or maybe the AIS account.
I?
Maybe the AIS account would have.
Yeah, yeah, so that was the extent of the meetings that I had.
Commissioner Schlangen?
I was also, I was on the first steps, and they were basically talking about their proposals that deal with the boards and everything to keep all the paperwork up. And that's pretty much with them, the budget. And I was at the Minnesota Department of Transportation up there with the, they had their CAF unit there, and then one extra unit that's been going around and doing studies all over the state and all over the country and just, they're both hybrid vehicles right now, but they're looking into the electric stuff and safety, technology, and that was about it. And for our submissions too.
Okay, thank you. Next, comments by commissioners. Commissioner Kapinski?
Mr. Chair, you know, over the last month, there's been some communication that has been directed towards all board members, and in my opinion, I think it's not directed, it shouldn't be directed towards all board members. And I think, you know, it's no different than this policy that we're moving forward on, that we had consensus on the policy handbook of a commissioner. You know, some of these things that we need to be prepared when we come to these meetings, we need to understand what it is, if not, we need to ask questions. And on the other side, it looks bad when we show up late and nobody knows where we're at. We need to be prompt, we are here to do a job, and I just wanted to throw that out there.
That was one of the main reasons a couple, three or four board meetings ago, I wanted everyone to wear their name badge when they're out at meetings and out in the public too. So hopefully, the commissioner handbook will address a lot of these issues, hopefully. Anything else? Okay, second committee of the whole meetings. Monty, Beth?
So Mr. Chair, I know, first off, Chris has requested it can be the whole to discuss various highway issues. I also understand that there's been discussion about having the subject of cybersecurity on a committee of the whole agenda, so both Chris and Steve are here, and perhaps they could toss out some dates, that might work, to put those on one agenda.
All right. You know, when we get together as a work session, we usually, we could usually kill a couple hours talking about some things. Just the three things I want to talk about, bring back our driveway entrance policy slash is that an ordinance? We got some MS4 issues we need to talk about, and then third topic I would like to talk about is turnback, bring that topic up again about turnback of some county roads back to the local municipalities. So those are the three main topics that I'd like to discuss. And just as a warning, be prepared for maybe a couple hours of discussion and working, so.
Thanks.
I know we're pretty flexible except for the 6th and 7th of September. We have bridge inspections that we have to get done that day. So I don't know if we want to look a week or two weeks out, or?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Kapinski?
Monty, in light of the DC trip falling on a board meeting, what would be the plan there? You'd still have quorum, but.
Well, I guess, as Chris, I'm sorry, you said the DC trip is falling on a board meeting day?
Yeah, the 20th.
Chris, are you certain of those dates?
Yeah.
The actual, when you'd actually be in DC?
Yeah, DC went, although, yeah.
So I would recommend, if in fact you're going to have two board members go on the 20th, I would recommend changing the date of the second meeting in September. Of course, you'd still have three folks available, but what if someone was not feeling well that day, then we wouldn't have a quorum.
Right.
So I would move your meeting on the 20th to some other date.
What about the 19th?
You know, I just had a thought. You're going to have a special board meeting on the 26th to adopt the budget levy. Why don't you just make that your regular meeting for all other business on the 26th? Does that work for everybody?
Yep, that makes sense.
So this, we'll just move the 20th meeting to the 26th, and that just takes care of everything, yep.
Perfect. Perfect.
Okay, let's do that.
I just wanted to make sure that we, when we were setting the cow, that those dates didn't come up too, so.
And I will be out of town the, the tenth through the eighteenth too of September.
And Chris, maybe we could, after we hear from Steve, we could get together with some dates that he's got available too, maybe?
That's okay, Mr. Chair.
That'd be fine. Steve?
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, it was a discussion with Commissioner Johnson about just providing a cybersecurity update to, to the board. Due to the sensitivity, uh, sensitive nature of some of the subjects, uh, we'll cover, uh, a cow seemed like an appropriate venue for that. Um, I'm pretty flexible on dates, so I'll just kinda piggyback along with what works for you and Chris.
Okay.
And we would put this all in the same one.
How long do you need?
How?
Fifteen to thirty minutes, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's keep them together then.
Yeah. Put them all together.
It should be short unless there's a lot of discussion, but, could be, but, thank you.
Thoughts on the twenty-seventh?
Any recommendations, Chris?
Uh, okay, so we're, we're today at the sixteenth of August?
Yep.
Uh, I don't know, the week of the twenty-ninth, anything open?
No, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first.
We have a cow scheduled already on the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Okay. The fifth?
That's Labor.
That's Labor Day.
Oh, that's not even on my calendar. I was planning on working it day. Thanks for saying.
You, you still can.
Yep. We planned and you're working too.
Yeah.
What about the sixth?
We have a cow with Human Services, but it sounds like we may reschedule.
It's on twelve.
Yeah. Uh, the first? Or, or Commissioner Pop, you said you were out the first still?
The, I count on the first of September, neither I yet.
Oh, that's right, yes, of course.
Twelfth or thirteenth?
That's a soil water conservation tour on the thirteenth. That's the full day.
I'll be gone that whole week.
Oh, that's right.
What about twenty-second? Is that too early?
Well, when are you back?
Oh, August?
Yeah.
That's next Monday. I, I can't.
Okay.
Okay. Let's just go to the twenty-seventh of September then. Is that too late, Chris?
Uh, no, none of these are, are absolutely time, uh, critical. So, the twenty-seventh of September.
Nine o'clock?
Yep, do that.
Yep, 'cause we're gonna have a special board meeting the twenty-sixth, so let's just move this cow to the twenty-seventh.
Nine o'clock, Mr. Chair?
Nine o'clock, if not earlier. It's up to you guys.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Monte, you have anything else to add?
Absolutely. Uh, typically, the board will schedule, uh, two.
Yep.
Budget work sessions.
Yep.
To have those discussions on finalizing the proposed. Usually, it, it can be accomplished in one, but it's good to have a second just in case. I would suggest pushing it into early September because by then we'll know a couple of, couple of things. We'll know our health insurance renewal and our final NCT premium, as we'll know by, uh, the end of August. The health insurance one is probably the biggest one of concern. So, I would say in those first few days, uh, first week or so of September, I would suggest having a budget work session, and then maybe, uh, one then towards the end, closer to the end of September, that week of the nineteenth, somewhere in there. So, uh, possibly September first and September second would be a good date for a budget work session.
You, somebody was gone the first and, probably.
Commissioner, Commissioner Pop was.
Yeah, I'm done.
What about the seventh and eighth?
Wednesday, the seventh.
Seventh or the eighth.
Seventh and eighth, how's that?
Seven. Uh, the eighth is really, in September is really busy for me.
The seventh then?
Wednesday, the seventh?
Wednesday, the seventh, okay. So, the first one is the seventh, um, at nine, I would say, okay. And again, it's good to have a backup date just in case you, you need additional time, additional discussions, um.
Monday, the nineteenth?
Obviously, it's gotta happen before the twenty-sixth.
Monday, the nineteenth?
It needs to happen before the twenty. Gotta be the nineteenth then.
Monday, the nineteenth, where?
Monday, the nineteenth.
Nine o'clock.
Does that work for y'all?
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's, that's kinda our backup date then. September nineteenth, okay? At nine. Uh, just, I believe we got one more here for you.
Well, September's full.
Um, back during, when the board did its goal-setting session, you expressed a desire to have a joint meeting with the Benton, the BEP board. So, I'm, I'm just following up on that, and I've had some communications with Amanda on that subject. She suggested that you could have a joint meeting with the BEP, BEP board on October twenty-eighth after, uh, after the BEP's quarterly meeting.
That's on a Friday?
Their quarterly should be on the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, this is, I'm just reading a date that was here and, and.
Okay.
This, the, the twenty-eight date is from Amanda. Is there any chance?
That's a Friday, and they're typically Thursdays.
Okay, thanks for checking. Uh, so let's just say October twenty-seventh. I'm gonna give you an approximate, when are those board meetings usually, the quarterly meetings usually over eight?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine o'clock.
Let's just say approximately nine o'clock then. Um, and it's gonna be at the, the Stock Rapid Parks by the river.
Clearing?
The clearing.
Yep.
The clearing, yes. So, nine AM, October twenty-seventh, the clearing at conclusion of the BEP quarterly meeting, so. I think between now and then, Amanda and I can kinda work out an agenda. Um, yeah, if I may just mention one thing, Commissioner Johnson, you, you, you reminded us we have the, the meetings on the twenty-ninth with architectural firms. I was asked by one of the firms is, we have a set questions, and I'll, I'll draft up a few questions and send them out to you all and for some comments, so it might be good that we have a few, uh, set questions to ask each of the firms. So, I'll set out a draft, and if you have some suggestions, send those back to me and, and it might be good to have a few set questions for each, each architectural firm.
Yeah.
So, that's all we have for cows.
Um, Monte, did you have the, um, local township's annual meeting or fall meeting? It's on the twenty-ninth of September.
Thank you for mentioning. I, I had that seen and noticed myself.
Okay, I got a notice.
Mr. Ben Boom said he was gonna start sending those to me, but I hadn't seen it yet, you know?
It's at the Glanarato Township Hall on, at seven-thirty on the twenty-ninth of September.
Thank you. Okay, seven-thirty Glanarato Town Hall, okay. Got that one, Ben?
Good.
September twenty, twenty-ninth?
September twenty-ninth, yeah.
Mr. Chair, one other thing. Monte, we gotta make sure that we have something for them at that meeting for this potential committee that we had talked about for a while. I'd like to see some movement on that.
So, Commissioner Kapinski, maybe we could have something to talk about on September sixth?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Is that it, Monte, for cows?
Is that it for your cows?
That's it.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, uh, uh, approve the following cows. Uh, the driveway entrance, MS four, turnback county roads, uh, through Highway Department, cybersecurity update on September twenty-seventh at nine o'clock. Um, we have budget work sessions on September seventh at nine, a backup date of September nineteenth at nine. Uh, we'll meet with our BEP board, um, after their quarterly meeting on October twenty-seventh at approximately nine AM, and then also our fall township meetings coming up on, uh, September twenty-seventh, I believe. Glanarato Township's.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, thank you. Twenty-ninth, Glanarato Township at seven-thirty PM. I think I covered them all.
Okay, I'll second that. Got a motion and a second for a set committee of the whole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. At this time, we're adjourned at ten-thirty-eight, and we're gonna take a two-minute break before we get.